Thank you. I now call the special meeting of the Board of Education to order at 5:33 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Coordinator please call the roll?
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Scovano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
I don't believe we have any students here with helping with the broadcast, but I'm sure we have, everything's in good hands with Allen, right? Alrighty, okay. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing in regards to the district's proposal to outsourcing transportation. The public comment session will take place after the presentation and questions and answers. So, I'll now ask Mrs. Holdley to provide an overview of the bid.
Thank you, Mr. Scovano. On March 1st, 2017, the district issued formal notice to the union of its intent to solicit bids for outsourcing transportation services. The invitation for bid, or the IFB, was issued on March 3rd, 2017. The IFB sought bids for two primary outsourcing functions. The first was to outsource the entire Transportation Department, which would include maintenance, buses, drivers, all, everything. And then, there are some variations within that. And then, the second, again, with some variations within it, was keeping all of the buses and maintenance, all of that function within, in-house, and outsourcing the driving function. So, we did decide to bring forward, after analyzing the single bid that came in, we decided to move forward with the second option, which is outsourcing the driving function, but keeping the buses in-house. So, with that in mind, I'm going to provide an overview of the timeline that led to the decision to issue the IFB, as well as reasons for considering outsourcing and the impact of outsourcing. And then, after that, we'll have Ms. Thorne present on the finances and First Student present on the bid that they submitted. So, as you may know, under the school code, the district can, a school district, and our district as well, can only outsource services when its contract with its current union is open. So, in other words, it can only outsource when there isn't a contract. And at the expiration of each contract with the Bus Drivers Union, in this particular case, administration has analyzed the viability of outsourcing transportation services. For example, in 2010, in December of 2010, the district had issued a formal request seeking information from potential bidders in the effort to identify whether the district's contract with the bus drivers was within the market range. And the responsive information was reviewed and discussed by the Budget Committee in some depth. Ultimately, administration didn't, decided not to proceed with the invitation, or with an invitation for bid, so formally outsourcing it. We'd entered into a contract with the Bus Drivers Union. And in 2013, administration again considered the possibility of outsourcing transportation services. This wasn't pursued, again, because we had negotiated and entered into a contract with the union. So, the most recent contract with the Bus Drivers Union expired on June 30th, 2016. The information bid was not developed or drafted overnight. It reflects about a year's worth of work. In the spring semester of 2016, administration began reviewing and discussing the possibility of outsourcing transportation services. Administration began drafting bids in June of 2016. The various drafts of the bid were sent back and forth outside council for review and input. We wanted to make sure that it, that we were following the legal requirements for outsourcing. And while administration initially had believed the IFB could be issued in January or February of 2017, there was some turnover in our Finance Department, which made this difficult and virtually impossible to do it that early. So, in addition, it was hoped that we could issue both the nutrition services, as well as the transportation bids at the same time, so early in the year. But, the state requires some oversight and input, and they have to approve any bid before it can be let for the nutrition services. So, we were ultimately unable to issue both of them at the same time. But, it did result in a delay. Again, it did, the district has been working on this for over a year. On April 7th, 2017, First Student, the only bidder, submitted a responsive bid. Our CFO, again, Nikki Thorne, will be talking about what the costs are for that. But, there are really two primary reasons for considering outsourcing transportation services. And this is what administration was reviewing, as well as the Board has reviewed. And the first is really to ensure that the focus remains on the core educational services, or the core education business of the district, which is educating students and improving student achievement and growth. Transportation of students, while it's important and a critical function, it's not the core business of the district. And second, it's to realize economic benefit by reducing and controlling operational costs, including but not limited to eliminating certain legacy costs, such as workers' compensation and IMRF pension payments into that system. And by having more flexibility to deal with workers' absenteeism. At RPS 205, administration has made various attempts to increase attendance at work, including offering attendance bonuses for good attendance and issuing discipline for poor attendance. The sad reality is that our attendance with our employees is not that great. And, so, about the highest attendance days that we have is before and after holiday, because employees get holiday pay. And so, these are things that we all took into consideration in making this determination. And, in fact, during our recent negotiations with the RBMA, the RBMA had expressed real concerns and wanted assistance with the attendance issues, because they get pulled in as substitute drivers. So, we really were trying to problem solve, and how do we deal with these attendance issues? And it's one thing that would not be our issue if we outsourced. So, that's, that's why I'm bringing this up. So, it would be the third-party vendor who would have to identify and provide sufficient numbers of substitute drivers. So, if the Board does decide to outsource, current employees whose positions are being outsourced would essentially be grandfathered in. So, to any new agreement with First Student. So, under state law, current drivers who submit applications, they would receive offers of employment from First Student. And if they accept those offers, they would receive the same level of benefits that they currently have. So, the legislative history of outsourcing statute also speaks to maintaining comparable insurance and comparable pension. So, what the pension looks like usually is a matching 401K plan, because they would no longer be eligible for IMRF, but it would be 401K that has a same match, or same type of match as IMRF. So, currently, public education employees are not eligible for unemployment benefits during the summer break, but according to First Student, because they're not a public education employer, their drivers generally are found eligible for unemployment benefits during the summer months. And so, that's an additional benefit for drivers that, one, that we don't actually provide, because under the state statute, they're not eligible, because we're an educational employer. If the Board outsources transportation services to First Student, it's possible that AskMe could represent the drivers hired by First Student. First Student has a president and positive relationship with, with AskMe and other unions in various locations that they do business. Thus, for example, when McLean County, Unit 5 School District bus drivers, they were initially represented by AskMe when, when they were employed by McLean County, and they now are represented by AskMe as, as employees of First Student. So, there was no change there. Administration would also have to negotiate the impact of any outsourcing with the union. We would have to talk about, for example, how accrued and unused sick days are paid for or applied, so how they would be treated or paid out. So, those are some of the impacts of outsourcing. And now, I guess, Ms. Thorne, you're going to provide the financial overview? Yes, thank you. I'm going to step over to the projector over here.
Or maybe not. Either, either location, whatever works better for you.
Thank you. What you'll see on the screen in front of you is the district started with the 2016 audited financial information regarding the Transportation Services Department. And we went through line by line and looked at costs that would be comparable to what was included in the First Student bid, and things that the district would actually keep as costs to the district. As Attorney Holdley spoke to earlier, the bid that we're looking at looks to outsource the driving, the field supervisors, and whereas the maintenance and those, those costs stay inside the district. So, if you look at the total at the top, in column J, it's $9.2 million, the 9187 figure. We're, we're going to subtract out $23,000 out of that figure, because we have some costs for athletics, that our enterprise rental cars, that will remain with the district. So, that was kind of a last-minute subtraction. What we did then, taking the 2016 audited figures, then we had to kind of bring those numbers up to where we would finish 2017. So, we're adding in workers' comp. We used an average of the last four years. We, because we utilize fund accounting, in the figures above, we did not consider FICA, Medicare, or IMRF benefits, because those are included in Fund 50 and 51, as required by statute. Additionally, we added in salary increases from the last and best offer that the Board implemented back in January, along with the benefits associated with that, added in unemployment, factored in a healthcare increase for fiscal '17. We use a conservative 6% increase, and we also factored in some additional costs from time to time. Our RBMA members have to drive a bus when we're short on substitutes. So, we kind of factored that in to come down to a fiscal year '17 estimated cost of $11,138,000 and some change. So, the union's last proposal, as of last Friday, is $11,555,307. What the district is outsourcing is for fiscal '18, '19, and '20. So, as we move down the sheet under fiscal '18, we're going to kind of go through the same math that we went through above. We're going to implement the last and final best offer for the full fiscal year of '18, include the benefits. In the last and final offer, there was some additional healthcare savings. Those are being considered as a minus, the minus $75,000 and some change there. We also increased health insurance costs to come down to a fiscal year '18 estimated cost of $11,622,746. The union's proposal of last Friday is $12,169,953. And First Student's bid, Bid B, is 11,000, I'm sorry, $11,637,373. So, you'll move to the right, Earl. So, the first number is showing First Student Bid B compared to the district's current cost for fiscal '18, which is, there's actually a small cost differential of $14,000. If you go, if you keep going down, Earl, over the three years, you can see, the first column is First Student versus the district's current cost. So, you'll see over three years, there's a $426,000 savings for the district to outsource. If you consider the outsourced bid from First Student and compare it against the union's most recent proposal of last Friday, there's actually a $2.7 million savings to the district in regards to outsourcing. So, that's kind of the, the exercise that we went through in order to be able to compare apples to apples. We wanted to start with, as I mentioned at the very beginning, audited financial 16 numbers, and then worked to increase based on offers that the Board has put out there and have been implemented already, to come down to the comparison that we just shared with you.
Thank you. I'll now invite Board members to ask their questions regarding the bid. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, now we turn it over to First Student for the bid presentation. Hit the button there till the light comes on.
There we go.
Magic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank the School Board and the administrators for inviting us in today. We're very appreciative of the opportunity to discuss our proposal for the future of transportation here at Rockford Public Schools. We're especially excited to talk through some of the details of our implementation plan, and specifically-
Could I ask you to introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Ensine, Business Development Director for First Student. Thank you. We're especially excited to walk through some of the details of this implementation plan, and what exactly that means for existing school bus drivers and staff members in the Transportation Department. I'd like to start off by introducing the First Student team that's here today. We have our Chief Operating Officer, let me go to the slide, Paul Osland. Roger Moore is our Senior Vice President. He covers Illinois and all the neighboring states. All operational responsibilities fall under Roger. Todd Steele is our Vice President of Business Development and Growth. Our local support here today is Bob Radkowski. He's the Area General Manager. Everything in the northern part of Illinois operationally falls under Bob. Again, my name is Michael Ensine. I am the Business Development Director out of Chicago. And even more locally, we have Liddell Cass, who is the District Manager based out of our Belvedere operation. He handles Belvedere and the Rockton Consortium, and he would also be overseeing the potential proposal that we have here for Rockford. So, with that said, I'm going to introduce Todd Steele, who's going to give a brief overview of First Student.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board today. Again, my name is Todd Steele, and I thought it would be helpful to provide just a brief overview of First Student and the experience, the experience that we bring to bear to, to Rockford. So, very briefly, First Student is actually a part of First Group. We are a transportation logistics set of companies. We principally operate with four different businesses in the United States. The first is Greyhound, which is the largest intercity bus transportation network in the United States. Second, we operate a company called First Transit, which provides management and transportation services largely to the public sector. Third, a company called First Vehicle Services, which provides maintenance both to our own internal fleets, as well as the fleets of other customers. And then, today, what, what you see in front of you is representing First Student. First Student is the largest school bus transportation provider in the world. We operate in 39 states and seven provinces of Canada, and we have the distinct privilege of providing 6 million student journeys every single day. And I say a privilege, because it absolutely is that. Each morning, I put my own children on a school bus, and I, I do that with the confidence that that school bus is going to arrive to school safely and reliably each day. You mentioned earlier that, that I assume that this Board wants every school teacher, every administrator, to wake up every single day thinking about, how do you execute against your mission? Your mission is to provide a world-class education to the students. We wake up every single day, all 57,000 of us around the country. We wake up every day thinking about, how do we provide the safest, most reliable, most cost-effective transportation solution for our children, my children, so that they're able to go to school and receive the benefits of the education that we're here to provide? So, we have been in this business for over 100 years. Our first school bus operated in 1913, and Paul Osland is going to talk a bit about what we've learned over those 100 years operationally.
Thank you, Todd. My name is Paul Osland, the Chief Operating Officer of First Student. I am delighted to be here tonight. I've lived the last 30 years here in northern Illinois, and really appreciate the chance to get back out to Rockford. We always operate as a local company. Our goal is always to fully staff, and our plan is always to fully staff with local employees. Our employees have a real passion for this business. Anybody that gets involved in yellow bus transportation, deals with the kids, this portion amount of homeless and special needs, and giving kids access, it becomes quickly into your blood. While we're local, our scale does give us some real advantages that allow us to be best-in-class in a number of areas. One of those areas is driver recruitment. We solicit and receive over 100,000 applications every year across the country. We hire approximately 10,000 drivers a year. We have developed processes and disciplines and partnerships nationally with people like ARP and the military and goodwill to help us find drivers to these challenging positions. Our scale helps us in planning. We have a First Planning Solutions Group that helps create the most efficient routes to save the most money for our clients. We have a real competency for maintenance, where we leverage all those resources. Whether you do the maintenance in this situation, or we do, we will leverage the tools that we've developed to create world-class maintenance. We are always on top of preventative maintenance. We do it every quarter. It's in our bid. You'll see it. It's a passion of ours. We fill our maintenance shops full of ASE-certified technicians. We have lots of technology. We help develop the child check system that are on most buses, all buses here in Illinois, to make sure childs aren't left on the bus. We help develop GPS systems that ride on all of our buses to make through, make sure pre-trips happen every day. We integrate that into our own proprietary focus system that gives complete visibility to us and even our clients in terms of where our buses are, what our on-time performance is, et cetera. We develop tools that our location managers get every morning at 6:00 in the morning, 11 different KPIs. They can see what, who was late to school the day before relative to our buses. They can see where we are in preventative maintenance. They can make sure payrolls begin process daily, a variety of things that really help us execute not just effectively, but efficiently as well. And it all leads to safety, which is why we're all in this business. We are the safest operator in this industry. Our national collision rate is less than half of the average student, average of student transportation companies. Our injured lost time off is less than half of our competitors. We're the only student transportation company that's ever been awarded, distinguished by the National Safety Council. In fact, I'll be going to that meeting later this month to give the award to this year's winner within that industry. So, safety is what we're all about. It's obviously the first priority to any, any transportation organization. I'm very proud to work here, and I'm proud to be here today. Thank you for a chance to earn your business. And I'm pleased to introduce Roger Moore, who is the best leader we have at First Student, West Point graduate, retired. West Point graduate, retired, no, the best leader we have here at First Student, retired Lieutenant Colonel from the military. Roger?
Thanks, Paul. Once again, thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight. As the Senior Vice President of Operations, I oversee all our operations here in Illinois. So quickly in three slides, I'm going to give you first some of the high level of the benefits we think there are for partnering with First Student, then give a little bit of insight into our footprint within the states. So first off, it all starts with highly-trained drivers, and our intention is completely to hire as many as possible of the existing drivers, monitors, and staff that currently work for you. And once those licensed drivers come over, they'll go through a seventeen-hour program on First Student's safety programs and to verify their skills. And then people coming off the street unlicensed to apply, they'll go through a forty-three to fifty-seven-hour program of classroom instruction, skills tests they have to go through, on-the-road training, and also safety training. It all translates, as Paul said, into the best safety record in the industry by far. And First Student also brings industry-leading technology platforms that we can provide and make available to the district that are going to give you full transparency on to our on-time performance daily. And important for the district, we're going to help relieve that burden that you have of managing a complex transportation service and allow you to focus on your core mission to provide world-class education to the Rockford Public School students. And as the industry leader, we've got access to the most comprehensive resources in routing, training, safety, technology, recruitment, and operational efficiencies. And also, because we have a large footprint across the country, across North America, and especially in Illinois, we run over, you'll see over four thousand buses, we've got about thirty-six locations here, we provide opportunities for the drivers, the monitors, and the staff to move up and to have a career path moving up within First Student. Many drivers and monitors who start within a few years will be on staff. They can be assistant location managers, location managers, and move up into senior management. Next slide. Here's our, part of our footprint. The first bullet just shows over the last four to five years, ten districts that we've taken over the transportation, whether the district was doing it themselves or we took it from a competitor. The next bullet shows just in the immediate area around Rockton, a number of the districts that we service nearby here. We've got twenty-five locations within an hour and a half of Rockford Public Schools, twenty-five hundred drivers, and we run almost four thousand buses across the state. And that footprint provides a lot. So if forever there is a shortage of drivers, people get a big case of the flu here, we can bring drivers in from surrounding locations. We'll do that often, and other expertise to help the local operations. Also, last five years, we have not had a strike or work stoppage, and we're heavily unionized. We've got a great local staff. Bob Radkowski, you're going to, is going to talk to you in a minute, over twenty-seven years in the industry, also ten years as a Board President at Valley View in Bowling Brook, Illinois. Liddell Cass grew up here, started, lived two blocks here from the district headquarters right here, living up in Rockton, working out of Belvedere right now, running our operations in this portion of Illinois. We've got great experience with converting districts. Bob will talk a little bit about our experience in McLean County. We have a short video we'll show you here in a moment. And we also have great experience with the Illinois Public Act. Now, a short video of how we converted and took over the transportation at McLean County, Unit Five.
Unit Five is unique that we've been in business since nineteen forty-eight. We're a growing district in the state of Illinois. We're probably in the top ten for growing districts. That means that we've added buildings, we've added students, we've added faculty, and we have a lot of need for a good transportation system. I think there's always this issue that when you go to third-party, that somehow or another we're bringing in people from outside to do our community work. So we knew that we had the opportunity to maintain and keep our workforce.
When we partner with a district, what we have to do immediately is get with our future employees, and that's the resources within the community that have been operating these buses, have been taking care of these children.
As the Director of Transportation for the school district, we face a lot of challenges and struggles. One of the concerns about going to an outside source is keeping the local drivers and keeping the relationship, the team to the community that was already established.
I was a little apprehensive about First coming in here because I enjoyed working for Unit Five. But once I got acquainted with First Student, I found out that they're a very, very professional organization.
First Students have been, for me, very positive. It's nice to see yourself being appreciated for what you do.
For the most part, we have the same management team. We have the same drivers, and we have the same monitors. But we also have a professional company behind us that understands and knows how to set up a transportation system within a school district.
Our goal was to make this a seamless transition. We did that by working with the Unit Five, by working with the principals, the staff.
From a customer service standpoint, from my perspective, First Student hit the mark dead-on.
I think anytime you go in to a group that specializes in a service, you go into it and the opportunity that you're going to learn from that opportunity. And I think that's what we've done here, is create an opportunity for us to work together to bring the best busing service available to our community, our parents, and our students.
Good evening. I was at Dashing and Dubinary, Young, Area General Manager, in that video. My name's Bob Radkowski, and we purposely wanted to talk about Unit Five in McLean County. There were comments at the last board meeting that were brought up. I thought we should address them. Unit Five privatized in June of twenty-twelve. The first thing we did was utilize the same law that was mentioned earlier. The Public Act was there to protect employees. We used it to ensure all employees received comparable pay and benefits. We had successful operations twenty-twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and we faced multiple challenges in the fall of twenty-sixteen. It included bell time changes, attendance center changes, driver shortages, all in a marketplace where the unemployment was less than five percent. But what we did was we utilized the resources of First Student. We've got forty-eight thousand drivers out there, fifty-eight thousand employees, and some very, very knowledgeable people about recruiting, retention, and changing culture and climate. We brought them in, and we worked in partnership with the school district, and I think the key on that, is that one word in that sentence, partnership. And that next bullet point was mentioned earlier. We successfully negotiated a collective bargaining agreement with Ask Me Council Thirty-One. It is the same Ask Me Council Thirty-One that is here. I don't know why we would not be able to get a contract. But we did have problems, so we thought we'd find out what the Superintendent of Unit Five would say today. And actually, two days ago, Dr. Daniel, the Superintendent of Unit Five, sent a letter to Superintendent Jared, and clearly says, "I recommend the quality and professional services of First Student. If not for First Student's range and access to resources, I believe our reduction of over a million dollars in transportation fund would have continued to result in poor performance and service." And that's from Mark Daniel. My point tonight is, Unit Five did not go to the National Guard. They went to First Student. Liddell Cass, your turn.
My name is Liddell Cass. I am the District Manager for First Student in this part of northern Illinois. As they, as we talked about earlier, Todd talked about our footprint in the industry. Roger talked about our footprint in the region and in Illinois. My footprint is literally local. As they said, I did grow up literally two blocks away. In my earlier years, I lived at, on South Fifth Street. So this is my territory that I roamed around. I have lived in the Rockford area and surrounding communities all my life. And that includes all twenty-six years of my transportation life. We have a large footprint as an industry, or as a company within the industry, but my entire footprint for this company has been in this community. The Rockford School District is considering a major change, and should you adopt that change, there will be a series of steps that goes forward. Following board award, there would need to be the negotiation of the actual contract between the district and ourselves. We would attempt to meet and want to meet with all of the current drivers and transportation staff as soon as possible, in the first week if possible. We need, and I cannot emphasize this part enough, we need the existing transportation employees that have functioned so well for you over the years to be part of our team as well. So we would make every effort to work with them and hire to go forward. It would be the base of our operations. As, as a new company coming in, so anyone that did employ with us, we would be a new employer for them, there would be steps that we would be required to take for them to become our employees. And it would include very industry-typical things such as physicals, drug tests, motor vehicle and criminal record checks. And assuming people meet all those criteria, we would be making offers to all of the current qualified employees who wanted to employ with us. Following that, we would start, and we would have training. We would have company-specific training that each employee would be required to go through. We would also want to check the skill sets of all of those employees to make sure we were all on the same page and everything was good to go forward. We would schedule administration meetings with any appropriate district staff to ensure that we were meeting all the needs, we were learning from you, meeting all the needs heading towards startup in the fall. Part of that could be our route review with First Planning Solutions, which is a gem within the First Student family. Last steps towards startup, we would, within the population, we would have to do route picks and test runs to be ready for the new year. Ultimately, Rockford is one of the largest transportation operations in the state. And in my mind, within this community, it's already, it's always been run very well by the drivers and the staff who have been your employees. I have a great respect for that. We have a great respect for that. First Student has the unmatched experience and resources to meet the needs of this large district. Our plans count on all the transportation employees who work for the district now. We are not here to change and replace everything that they're doing and doing well. Our goal would be to learn from and add to what they're doing well. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you. We appreciate the opportunity in this bid. We are hoping to be your partner going forward.
Just in conclusion, we appreciate the opportunity to have provided a proposal to you. We're hopeful that we can come in and we can be partners with the district and hire as many as the existing workforce and have a very successful start to the school year coming up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now I'll open it up to the board members for their questions. Mr. Connor, you want to go first?
I know some of this will be worked out if there, if this is approved in contract, but just, I have some general questions. First is about your corporate governance versus local. I assume that each of your business units is autonomous?
Yes, they are autonomous.
Push your button, please.
Have you hit the button on the mic again? There you go.
Okay, there. Thanks. Okay. Yes, they are autonomous. Our corporate headquarters is in Cincinnati also. You're right here in the Midwest, close by.
So what level actually controls the budget and the decisions? So within that, is there a local operational control, or does each unit control its own budget?
Well, we control our own budget here, and First Student has its own budget, and we follow it. And then each region, I've got the region that covers much of the Midwest, especially here in Illinois. We've got our own budget, well-resourced here to provide you excellent service.
I'm actually asking a governance question. So who makes the decisions on how to spend money? So does regional make the decision, or does local?
Well, that's worked in combination together. Do you want to just?
Yeah, maybe I can help with this. It is mutual. Leadership at the local level requests and has the opportunity to spend money up to a certain level. After a certain level, they come and they'll get approval from myself, my district manager. Following that, the next level is my Senior Vice President. But in terms of the ability to make decisions, the individual on the ground in this location is empowered to make the decisions, whether it's on spending money or on operational needs.
In terms of the scope of the contract, and I don't know if we talked about this, does this include charters, or is that an option?
It does for right now, but that is an option moving forward. Our charter partners are supposed to give us appropriate notice each year, excuse me, and they're also supposed to take steps to provide their own charter services. I think what we would look to doing is trying to separate them out into a separate contract with whatever, with First Student.
Okay. In terms of the local, and obviously you don't know our current workforce, but in terms of the current workforce is at Belvedere and so forth, what's your average age and
We do know your workforce a little bit, and I can't honestly recall the average way, average age.
Not for us, but I'm just saying for your current local force.
But for us, in Belvedere, we have-
Belvedere has a higher tenure.
On average, in Belvedere, that location is approximately nine to ten years in terms of average tenure. Turnover ratio is approximately five percent.
Okay. Five percent turnover. Yeah, average age is roughly-
Well, in this particular case, and I don't mean to misspeak, but the way, the buses that will be a part of this contract are going to remain yours.
No, no, people, real people.
And would you then repeat that?
Average age.
Average age of drivers. Wow, that's changed considerably over the years. I used to say it was all retirees, but now I would, I would be willing to guess that the average age is somewhere around forty to forty-two.
Okay. In terms of the reporting section, you've got on-time performance and so forth. I assume you track your routes and sort of the, you know, average pickups and all the other stats around that on your reporting?
Yes, we do. All the buses will have Zoner GPS on it. We've also got a proprietary software focus which ties the bus to the route to the driver. We can track all kinds of telematics here. We can tell if anybody is speeding. We can tell they're on time. We can provide all those stats and be transparent to the district.
So you have sensors on the bus, basically?
Right. This is a little, just, it's an enhancement to your current system. Because you don't currently have the focus system. You have GPS. We're already going to add those to your vehicles so that we can get all of that data. And it also serves as an electronic pre-trip. It also serves for payroll purposes.
On page seven, you talked about technical solutions. Is that all software, or are they the ones you've already mentioned?
The technical solutions that are out there are many. First View is one of them where a parent has the ability to look on their iPhone and see when the bus is coming.
So you have the system of apps, and then you have a server, and then you post it so that parents can track?
Yeah, we have, we have the-
Those solutions are available there. We have a suite of solutions here.
Yeah. And now, is that included in the contract, or is that over and above on the solutions?
The app that we just talked about, that is not part of the contract. However, it is something that is a resource that we will have that could be negotiated into it.
And is a modest cost overall.
Okay. Does the Belvedere or McLean County or whomever, do they use these software solutions?
Belvedere uses some software solutions. We have other districts. The Niles School District utilizes Z-Pass. Stevenson High School utilizes Z-Pass and the ZTA app for the parents.
Oh, okay.
And those are different things. Z-Pass is like a card.
Yeah, yeah.
And you read on and off.
Okay.
Now, First View is a new app that we're coming out that, and it's going to be the industry-best. It's been piloted a number of districts, and we're coming out full this fall at districts who've signed up for it at this point.
And so will you have recommendations for us as part of any kind of contract negotiations on the kinds of things that you recommend as part of the implementation?
When it comes down to the contract negotiations, and again, that's an assumption that we're going to get to that stage. When it comes to it, we're going to bring the full suite to the table, and then the district is the one that will really make the decision of what provides value or what is to be put off for after-startup.
Okay. And one, just one more thing is, do you have standard data feeds in addition to your reporting so that if the district had its own reporting, you can export that to us so that we could, we're looking at a warehousing package, for example?
I'm not sure.
Like a standard data extract, you know, comma delimited file or something?
We, we have the ability to export files. I, I'm not sure on your particular question, but here again, what we do have.
Just the capability of being able to pass off the data so it's not just hardcoded reporting. So you have an app that we could purchase, we could get data from you if we wanted to and use it ourselves.
And one of the big, one of the biggest things that was spoken about earlier is First Planning Solutions. We've got people that, that's all they do. They live in Missoula, Montana and they're bored.
So your, is your, so your support is really centralized from that standpoint? Okay.
They support the local team, but they're really world experts here, certainly in planning solutions, electronic routing especially.
Next, Mr. Rollins.
So if I'm a parent and the bus is late, how is this set up? Do I still call the school district? Is, is there some coordination there? Do I have to call for a student? Who do I, who do I call?
What I'm envisioning at this point is that this is turnkey in terms of staffing and drivers. And that when they're calling the number that they've called before, it's going to be a First Student employee answering, a First Student employee giving the customer service and the information. I've not had any discussion otherwise about the district retaining that, that sort of information base. It should be ours.
Okay. And then do you coordinate with the individual school buildings? If there's a bus that's going to be late or whatever, do you report that to the principals? You've got all the principal contact information, school building contact information?
That's a very good question because most people don't think about that. They, they honestly don't think about what's happening on a day-to-day basis. And one of the first things we have to do is build, we have to build a database of exactly that, all of the principals, all of the proper administrators, even the, even your communication specialist, so that we know at what level we can, we contact. A late bus, five minutes late, we're going to call the principal or they're designated, we're going to let them know. We may do it, may, may decide to do it via email. It may be a text message, but they have to know.
So then another sort of coordination issue is with our student discipline code and some of the conduct on the, on the school buses. Do you train your drivers on the student discipline code, the student code of conduct? It's not a discipline code, it's a student code of conduct. Do you coordinate then with the, again, with the building principals if there are discipline issues on the buses?
We, we've actually, I'm sorry to say it, but we actually have an app for that. And, and we do have the ability to really use a technological answer on student discipline. But moreover, we do train on student discipline, we train on the expectations of the school. And the ideal situation is that we're in with that particular school, understanding what their PBIS training is. Putting that training into the school bus so that we're augmenting as a part of the classroom.
Okay. And the last question I've got, and it might be a question for the administration, it might be a question for you. I don't know where we're at on the contract, but are there performance requirements built into the contract where, for instance, an on-time, an average on-time?
Both of us are nodding on that. There are liquidated damages that are built into the bid specifications. I assume they would become a part of the contract as well.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Segal.
Would the administration remain, retain control over routing?
Would the administration retain control over routing? The administration has made it clear that that is the case. However, bear in mind, we have that resource of working out with First Planning Solutions where we could actually review the product. There's been no instance that I've heard of that the routes are terrible, bad or inefficient. I don't know.
Of course not.
I mean, truly, I don't know and I'm sure that some folks will help me find that out. But once we found it out, we can run it through our systems and make recommendations to the district for potential changes.
It becomes important for us as we periodically will have a demographer come in and reassign schools to certain areas. And if we don't have control over the routes, that can become a little bit tricky as far as communication. And I'm assuming if you have control of the routes and there's a change in the routes, there could be, you know, further costs associated with rerouting.
If you have the control of the routes, we certainly, our First Planning Solution experts can come in and assist. They are expert at doing all those what-if studies. If you change bell times, you change out of school, change school boundaries and stuff, they'll give you all the parameters, give you options and tell you, you can save this amount of money here or you might want to consider this. They're very good and we'll work as a partner with you to help you on that.
And the key is they're talented in all of the current routing systems, so we can utilize your routing system and your database.
But if the school would, you would control.
That is my understanding.
Good enough. Does the district maintain liability for, you know, accidents or mishaps that might happen?
That would become an issue for council to work with us on. There eventually is some kind of liability anywhere. However, there are indemnification clauses that are placed in the bid specifications currently. The first issue comes to us. Did I answer that correctly, council? Thank you.
Is the First Student bid that was submitted as competitive as it would have been had there been other vendors?
That's the nice thing about having closed bids. The fact is, we had no idea who was going to submit a bid, if at all. So in the current bid laws, it is a sealed bid and on the, up until the day of the stated time of opening, we don't have any idea. So we have to be as competitive as possible while still maintaining our returns to investors.
It's a very competitive environment here in, in Illinois and really across the Midwest and the state.
This is only wants to put in a word.
Yes. The other thing is that there was an error on our bid itself, so we had the wrong number of field trip hours. So First Student did submit in a corrected bid as a result of that, and they could do that because they were the only bidder.
And will the administration establish a cap on cost overruns?
In the bid itself, it talked about, they had to submit in the three years, the first three years. And then in year four and five, those are option years. According to the bid, they couldn't exceed 2%.
2%.
I'm almost done, I promise. Actually, I lied, I am done.
Any other? Ms. Jackson?
Good to, so we heard tonight at least two reasons of why we're looking to outsource. One is we want to ensure that our focus remains on a core component, which is educating students and then the recognition of the elimination of cost. We also heard that attendance for our current bus drivers has not been that great for us. So please tell me how you get your employees to come to work. What makes them want to come work for you that we can't get them to come work for us, apparently?
It's another good question. And Roger has told me for the last 10 years of our relationship.
Pardon me, who was Roger?
This young man right here. If you don't enjoy coming to work, if you feel that badly about coming to work, we're doing something wrong. We must create a culture that says, it is a good place to work. It is a place where we have pop-up barbecues, we, we know about everybody's birthday, that we do little things and big things. Half of us walk around with First Student jackets on and the other half have First Student t-shirts. We strive to create an environment, but sometimes that doesn't work. What we then have to do is recruit more drivers and have an excess pool of drivers so that we're not relying on administrators to go out and run buses. If, if it takes a 15% factor, which it does in normal, by the way, in McLean County, normal in, the industry average is about 10%. We need 15 down there for the very same reason that you mentioned. People have sick days, children, they carry children, children make them sick. They have to take off. This is not, not necessarily abuse, this is management of expected job openings on any given day. And frankly, I can reach out and find drivers.
So, you know, t-shirts and pop-up barbecues are great, but what we hear concerns are related to healthcare and wages, so speak to me more along those lines.
Okay.
So what would make me want to come? Yeah.
Healthcare, they currently have and they're going to continue to have it. And, and under the state law, even if it wasn't legal, it would be immoral to take something away from someone. We have built in wages and we, a young lady earlier this evening said, do you know we have steps where we go up? Well, yes, I know that. We're going to honor it. We're going to make sure that we're transparent in what money you make today and what money you're going to make next year and the year thereafter. And we're going to enter into an agreement with our employees that it's going to be posted, they're going to have access to it. We're going to try to improve on the current benefits. We know what you have and then we have a suite that we can bring in as well. Money is the same problem you have. There's a cost. There's a cost per hour and there's a cost in benefits. We believe we're going to be able to fulfill that need. We believe that, again, on the steps, I think you go up to 18, 20 steps. We compress them to about seven so you get to the high pay, the high wage factor faster so that you've got something to look forward to.
And so I did hear, I believe, someone said that you hire about 10,000 individuals per year? Is that just bus, speak to me about that?
I believe Paul Osland made the comment. We actually get about 100,000 applications a year nationwide.
Okay.
Out of the 100,000, we'll hire about 10,000 nationwide. That's because of growth where we'll attain new contracts, that's because of attrition. The fact is, there are people like me who someday want to sit on a boat instead of a bus. And folks retire, they move on, so they need to be replaced. It is also, we have to also understand, it is not a full-time job, it's a part-time job. So that creates more fluidity in the marketplace.
You speak part-time, what is that, about four to five hours per day?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Four to five hours per day.
They had about four or five hours.
I think typically right now, your, your routes average at about, and I'm trying to remember the exact number, Liddell, 5.38?
5.82.
5.82. 5.82 hours a day on average. That means somebody else might be getting five, somebody else might be getting seven, but that's where we honor seniority. The big thing on this job, the really big thing is, I know the date I was hired. I know my seniority. And there's very few opportunities, I get to pull rank on this guy because I was a sergeant and he was a colonel. But my rank is, I've got seniority on him. And these, these good people behind me, they know their hire date. We need to honor that. We need to make sure they have the first opportunity to pick their work and choose it up to 40 hours a week and then the next guy moves on.
Okay. And you said the average tenure is eight to nine years?
I'm sorry.
Eight to nine years, 10-year average. I think we talked at Belvedere nearby, picking one nearby location out here.
What is it for us, the average tenure, do you have, for our bus drivers?
I don't know if we know that. We can get that though.
I'll bet you could.
So typically, regardless of situation, the first couple of weeks of school are sometimes rough and sometimes we get parent concerns. So especially with, I guess, a new contract, assuming there was ever, it seems to me that you have a standard process here. You talk about test runs. Is that part, one, I guess, is, is that part of your standard process for new contracts? And then two, to what length do you go to ensure that you have a successful start of the year?
That's, that's a really great question. Test runs are not just for new business. Test runs are for every contract we have because children move in, children move out, believe it or not. The, the child I was driving last year graduated and is gone, there's a new stop added. So to those lengths, we ensure that every driver has had a proper test run, knows the route before we're going out and picking up children. We do it at the time that the route is scheduled to run. Sometimes that causes a little confusion in the community. I missed the bus. No, you didn't, school starts tomorrow. We, as far as the lengths we go to, we review every route, we review every driver. When it, when we ask someone to go out and do a test run, there's GPS. I can go on GPS and find out how well they actually did the test run. I can praise them for doing a good job. I can suggest they might want to go back out again because the route doesn't have McDonald's on it. As far as every, the training that is set up, the primary one that we train on is student discipline prior to start of school year, is that's usually where we have our problems.
First Student also has, for every location across North America, we've got an excellent startup template that every location is required to use. So if you can imagine an Excel spreadsheet that has different tabs, one will be for driver training, one will be for retention, one will be for maintenance, making sure we have the right proper maintenance on the bus. One will be, will be for coordination with the school principals and the administration. Every facet that we've learned over decades of doing this, the best practices put together on that. So every location works it. We track it every week to make sure they're following a timeline on it and we'd be glad to share that with the district as, as we start this up. For a first-time startup, we'll also bring additional resources in to help make sure, because all the drivers, existing workforce even has to at least get 17 hours of training for us. So we'll bring some extra trainers in and resources as you would expect from a market leader to make sure we have an outstanding startup.
And I think also, one of the things both Roger and I learned from the military is a situation report. The Board of Education, especially the superintendent, needs to know what happened yesterday. So we should be able to provide that on a real-time basis every morning. We should be able to provide you a transportation report on a monthly basis to tell you exactly how many buses were, were late, why they were late, what we did about it. You need the information because you go to the jewel. You go to the local store and you talk to citizens and you're an elected body. The superintendent needs it to make sure that he has the same data you have.
Ms. McCollough.
So what percentage of the districts that you're in in Illinois have union, are union members?
That's a good question. I would say it's about 90, probably about 92%. We deal with AFSMI, we deal with the Teamsters, ATU, SEIU.
Laborers.
Laborers, the Steel Workers Union, the amalgamated automobile workers union.
So that's led by the membership or by your, I mean, I understand that if you have 50% that you hire from our district, right, that are union members that can choose to be there?
Right, as we take over a contract, if it's 50% plus one person, then we'll, Bob here.
Then we get, then we get into the legalities of recognition and there's specific state laws and federal laws that we have to follow in that regard. Being a union location is a good thing. It provides a pathway, it provides work rules. It ensures that management is not doing something on the side. It ensures there's not favoritism. It ensures discipline and a pathway to remediate that. We, in, in the areas that I have, all but two of my locations are unionized.
So the two that aren't?
One of them is Schaumburg School, Schaumburg location, it's approximately 400 drivers. And I've known them for the last 20 years and they're happy. They don't feel that they have that need. I'm sure that if a union rep walked in there and told them they needed them, something might happen. The other one is Northbrook. And again, that's a long-term facility that's been there for over 20 years and there's never been a need. But when there does, when there is, I think it's very important to note, because Paul is sitting here and he is the CLO of the company, we have a policy in our company. It's called freedom of association. We believe that every employee has the right to hang around with anyone they want to hang around with. We believe that they should have the knowledge and make an informed decision and they have a right to a private vote. We don't mess with that.
And First Student overall is probably about 70% unionized also as a result.
You mean nationwide?
Of the freedom of association because the employees have their choice to, if they want to unionize, that's, we don't fight it. they want to unionize, that's, we don't fight it.
One of the things that was mentioned earlier is, as a district, our employees, who are part-time employees, seasonal so to speak, they work for us all year and then they come back again in the fall, but they do not get unemployment.
That's correct.
And my understanding is that that would be different with you. And so could you speak to that and why you're able to do that? And is that indeed true for all your employees?
Well, it is a true statement for the state of Illinois. I can't speak outside of the state because they won't let me out.
That's fine, we're in Illinois.
But when a, the state has always taken the position that when a school bus driver joins a school district, they know what they're signing up for. And typically, their wages and benefits are compressed into a 10-month period or a nine-month period. And they can even get pay during the summer if they choose like a teacher. The difference is that First Student, there you go, First Student offers work during the summer. We have work available. You lay the people off. You stop them from working. So what we do is, we go to the state and say, "We have some work available, but we don't have work for others." Those that choose to go on unemployment, we do not fight it. The state has never disagreed with it.
Well, and what percentage then do you have on unemployment? Let's, we're staying in Illinois here.
It depends on the district and the contract. Galesburg School District operates 32 vehicles and during the summer, they need 10 for the, or not 10, two routes for summer school. So 30 people choose to take unemployment. But they could go to Peoria, which is our Bartonville location. They could work out of there if they wanted to and if the work was there. So on a percentage basis, depending on the size of the facility, I would have to guess that about 80% go on unemployment.
Really driven by your summer school.
Right.
How many routes do you run in the summer?
Well, we only have four weeks
Right.
Of the summer, so you still got
There is still time.
Six or so that nobody's
And truly, you're talking about a benefit they've not had before. We're not talking about taking away benefits they have. We're talking about augmenting them.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Yep.
You said that you would honor the steps and lanes that are in their current contract.
Correct.
Well, the lanes are for longevity, right? The steps. So is that consistent across, I mean, so when this, how long does that go on, I guess is my question?
I guess.
And how is that consistent with other districts? I'm staying in Illinois because that's
Again, same with the state of Illinois. We typically, whether union or non-union, we create steps, excuse me, we create steps for everyone so they know what their pay is today and what their pay will be next year. In the case of union shops, what we do is we negotiate those steps. And there you may find that we've added wage in one step and frozen another in order to spread the dollars around. But that becomes a union issue and it becomes a contract negotiation.
Are you self-insured?
In regards to what?
Medical?
No. We utilize, our MAP 1, MAP 2 is an Aetna plan.
I would like to voice also my concern about the discipline aspect of it and how you deal with the districts with that. How does that, how does that work in other?
Student discipline?
Sure. We have, I mean, we have student discipline to deal with on the buses.
We do.
You know, your employees would not be our employees.
Correct.
And so, and yet we'd have to marry or be engaged or whatever we have to be to deal with that. And so how does that work in other districts and?
It's fair. First up, whenever you're talking to a district, a new customer, is what are your policies? What constitutes student discipline? What do you want reported?
Did you look it up? Did you guys read our discipline code?
I did not read the full discipline code and I have not found the discipline form yet. I did honestly scan it. But then I find out that each school is kind of unique too in how they do discipline, especially when you're talking about special ed students or students that can't, the action is beyond their control. So we need to identify how you as a district intend to have district discipline done, what format to do it in, and then we train our drivers on it. We also train our drivers in time-tested, again, best practices, you like that term, in the best practices that we have around the country in diffusing situations. Student discipline does not necessarily mean we need to scream at a child. What it means is we have to document the issue. If we're utilizing PBIS, that school tells us the best way to work through those processes. We don't, we don't want to do anything that the district does not want done. We're not going to lay a hand on a student, but we are going to report it. Then it's your job to deal.
We'll work hand-in-hand with you. We also have, as Bob mentioned, First Axe is a very inexpensive software program we developed, best-in-class, that automates the whole procedure. So if a driver has an issue on a bus, he can come back to dispatch. They will type up a report of the incident on the bus, the time. It will go to wherever the district wants, to that particular school principal or administrator, also to the district, whatever. It can, it automates the whole program in that it'll do first, second, third time if there was an incident with a student. It will provide, allow the district to provide feedback to us, was discipline taken? Because that's important to our drivers, too. They know that if they have an issue on the bus, that it's taken seriously and if, you know, a letter went home or whatever was chosen to do with the student who had it. So bottom line is, we're going to work with you and help provide some tools to assist it.
It also takes you actually into the 21st century. We don't have to fax anything that way.
Right. Okay. But what's your management level that you'll be bringing in so that if somebody, a driver has an issue with discipline, they are not going to make it back to that bus bar and they want somebody out on site? What kind of backup do you have there to send someone to the bus to deal with a discipline issue, for example? I mean, I'm sure you have someone for accidents, but
Yep, we do.
On a day-to-day basis.
I want to kind of couch this because as I recall, the bid specifications currently call for the existing staff, and you currently have folks that go out and deal with the discipline issues. Those are people that we would be hiring. So
But they would be your staff?
They would be our staff that we hire, that you currently have, and they would be those road supervisors that would go out and deal with discipline issues versus collision issues. We, by the way, we also have a very, various levels of staff in terms of road supervisors, location safety managers, managers, we're going to go out to the scene as well.
Can you speak to your safety record?
I'm sorry?
Your safety record, accident record?
Do we keep?
Can you speak to it?
Can you speak to it?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll speak a couple of things and we can all, and I'll just say here, you saw we run, the National Safety Council has the Green Cross for Safety Award. It's given to one company in America per year based on their safety training systems and programs they have in place and their safety record. So about four or five years ago, First Student was awarded that. And next year, it could be IBM, it could be General Electric, it could be Delta Airlines the next year. So one company in America per year by the National Safety Council, the premier safety organization in the U.S., we're the winner of that. In the industry, we're twice as better as any competitor here as far as our safety record on collisions and injuries and such. We have an excellent safety record here in Illinois. And obviously, all this would be transparent to you if, when we take over and you can, we brief you on our safety programs and keep you informed of any collisions we have or injuries and such.
Right, but I'm comparing before you take over to, have you looked at our record?
No. We do not have access to yours. We did not have access to yours. And probably rightfully so, that's
Not during the bid, but
Right. But I intend to ask for it. I intend to look at safety records. I think one of the things that we have to understand, and this is, this is a shout-out to the folks behind me. 250 buses go out every day. Those 250 buses do probably about two or three trips every morning. They do the same thing in the afternoon. And in the afternoon, they load 47 kids onto a bus. They're high on sugar and we drive them around in the rain. These people do a tremendous job. We have nothing but respect for them. If we can help them in their skills, if we can help them in understanding turning ratios, in understanding child checkmate, we're going to create a better, safer environment and improve them, which we've currently done.
Okay. I think I'm going to ask the last board question, and that is, what ways do you have to identify your customer satisfaction? All right? As far, and I, and to me, the customers are not only the drivers and the principals, but also the parents. So I just ask if you have some experience with that and other?
I'll start and then Bob can answer. And first off, you're right, our customers are here. The customers of all of you, they're the community, they're the principals, they're the parents. So the communication is key. We'll have regular meetings with the district to talk about our progress and how we're performing. We'll provide reports to that. We'll be in touch, in regular touch with all the schools, the principals, to make sure we're meeting their needs with it. The company has an annual survey that goes to all our customers that comes out in January that's exhaustive, where you rate the local staff, the region staff, the overall satisfactions. It's probably about 30 questions there. We use that to learn for improvements and also the constant feedback. We'll also have our management come and talk to you as a board and give you updates on how we're doing. We'll reach out in every way we can to make sure we're meeting your needs and you can argue with that.
I would like to add to it and make a suggestion.
Sure.
The suggestion is, is that as you go forward and if we get into a contract discussion, I would suggest you pull up the contract with McLean County
Okay.
Because they specifically call out a joint district contractor, community survey, where we've put it together, we've had the insight, we then, through Dr. Daniel's office, in order to keep it fair and above board, that gets sent out to all community members, parents, business people, what do you think about transportation? And that really gives us some strong insight.
Thank you. Which, these two?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Holy is going to ask the two of you to have a seat over there.
So we get out of the way.
So that you can have a microphone. And then I, and I would like to ask Mr. Sadlowski and/or Ms. Smith if they have questions that they would like to ask the presenters about the bid and have the opportunity to ask them questions. Go ahead, if you want to give some instructions to them. Oh, did you? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Smith. I'm the president of the Bus Drivers.
Edward Sadlowski, Staff Representative, Council, 31 AFSMI.
Just the bidder? That's Could you explain how your company plans to make the transition on 7/1/17, only given about six weeks of, till school starts?
Given about six weeks.
So given about six weeks, in the event that we have a contract, I believe that this would happen some point in May. I can tell you that at McLean County, we got the award on July 5th, or June 5th. We had a meeting with all drivers and monitors in McLean County on June 6th. We were prepared. We gave them all FAQs, frequently asked questions. We made some specific promises and we shared pay rates. Then we went into the process of doing the criminal background check, MVR, and starting the training. And we were prepared to get.
Okay. And also regarding the hiring process, could you explain how that will work? Because we start in school, May 20
Yeah. Yeah, that's a fair question. I'm going to repeat it. I'll repeat it because I'm a little louder than you. And the question is the hiring process itself. We're in school through May. And how are we going to get together and get this accomplished? First off, what we will do is, it's called a short app. It's just a little piece of paper with your basic information on it. We ask you to fill it out. We're going to give you a date certain to say it needs to be filled out and completed by X date. All individuals that fill that out and completed by X date, given enough time, are then going to have their seniority honored. We are going to promise them that they come in first in their order of seniority. And then any transfers, assuming, say, a Belvedere driver from First Student wants to transfer in, they would be entailed into your existing seniority list. And then any new drivers that come in off the street would be last on the seniority list. But we recognize you're going to be driving. We will set up classes, we will set up interviews on evenings and weekends, and we will certainly put that training out there in the summertime available to you.
Okay. And what is your percentage of drivers, current drivers that are going to be hired?
The percentage of current drivers that will be hired?
I can answer that.
What do we anticipate?
I can answer that, but, hi. We don't know because it all depends on who applies and who wants to go over to First Student. So that's really, it all depends. If everybody has that opportunity and we're all, you know, you're all already DOT employees, so you have to undergo random periodic drug tests. So we don't assume there's going to be any issues with that. And the same, you've already underwent a criminal background check when you were initially hired. We don't assume there's any issues out there. So we're anticipating that everyone who does apply would end up being hired.
That's our goal, to hire as much as possible existing workforce. You know the community, you're passionate about the students, the parents, the schools. We need you, we want you in here, and we're going to do everything we can to make it an easy transition for you and expedite the training and run you through our background checks and get you onboard.
Can you explain your route system?
Can we explain our route system in terms of the routing itself? It's your route system. As I understand the bid process, it is your route system that would be utilized. We asked that question at the pre-bid meeting. Your current Director of Transportation, Mr. Wilson, indicated he was very happy with the system, that it would continue to be utilized. What we're offering up is a second set of eyes to review the reviewers.
I have another question. Basically, if outsourcing is basically to save money, if you're saving, if you're saving the district money, how are you making the money? So that's towards the board.
What you have to understand is, as the large corporation, we run 50,000 buses. If, for instance, if we buy buses, we buy the most buses in North America. So we're probably going to get the best pricing, the best features, and it goes down with getting repair parts, all those kinds of things. Our scale, our size helps us in that.
If we're buying insurance policies for 48,000 people, I would posit that we buy at a lesser cost than the school district can get.
Okay. You had mentioned bus monitors. Currently, we don't have bus monitors.
That is my understanding as well.
So that would cost more money for the district or?
No, that would only be
Is that in the budget or in the bid?
We put in, in our language, we always think of bus monitors. We know that the bus monitors are currently working for Sunrise and they're providing the special education. However, we do know that at times, the district will require a bus monitor on a regular ed route. So as a result of that, we make sure that in our responses and everything we do, we provide pricing for it and we provide a job description for it.
How do you handle difficult kids?
How do we handle difficult? You mean the lesser-than angels? There's a few, there's a few. And that goes to the questions about student discipline. There's always a few out there, we know that. If a staff member has to ride the bus with you to make a positive impact, we'll do that. The district has cameras. We have video equipment that we can follow up on. When a driver comes in and says, "I've got someone that is less than an angel," our safety team has to listen to you because that less-than-an-angel might get a little worse and then get a little worse. But then we also have to look at the drivers. How are you communicating? Is there a better way? Is there a positive-based, a PBIS system way that can do it? And in some cases, we can't. We can't make a positive effect. That's where we talk to council and the administration because there are Because there are some, and it happens. When you operate 3 million students a day, going to be somebody in there, going to be.
Will the property taxes lower seeing how the district won't be taking care of transportation? If not, where is the extra money going?
I'm, I'm sorry. Ashley, I'll respond to that, but can you restate that again?
Okay. Will the property taxes lower seeing how the district won't be taking care of transportation? If not, where is the extra money going?
The property taxes, the board has taken numerous steps to lower, or to try to lower property, the property tax rate. The savings, the savings would be $400,000 over the course of three years. So that equates to roughly four teachers, although over the course of four years, it's roughly two teachers, sorry, over the course of three years. So it would go to additional personnel and focus on education, again, to focus on the core business of the district.
But what about the drivers?
That would be a separate negotiation with the new employer.
Okay. I'm hearing all these, like, apps that you're saying to make sure your kid get, you know, to track your bus or to see how long it's going to be before your bus gets there. Is that in the bid? Is that, because I see that's more money.
There are some things that are not in the bid that are normal courses of doing business, that we have accounted for. First and foremost, as a driver, the absolute last thing that anybody would want to do is leave a child onboard unattended. My grandchildren ride buses. My grandchildren. And I don't tell anybody which bus they're on. So, we automatically will go in and put in our child checkmate system. We're going to train you on how to do that. That's, that's not a cost we ask someone to bear. That is a cost that we require of ourselves. There are other apps that we've talked about that are not in the bid. And those are choices that the district will have to make if and when they want them. Some of this is not going to be done on day one and shouldn't be done on day one, because we're concentrating on something else.
And I just want to step back and go back to the tax rate. Mr. Rollins has done significant work on attempting to maintain reasonable taxes within the district. Mr. Rollins, would you care to answer that?
So, so a question is, where is the money going to go? So, right now, we're projecting, we've finally gotten to a balanced budget for the next fiscal year. There are going to be, we know there are going to be increases in costs in other areas. We know there are going to be increases in costs in teacher salaries. We know there are going to be increases in costs in bus fuel, which is not actually part of this bid. The district is still going to be providing the bus fuel. So that, you know, those increases, whatever savings there are, will simply, potentially, help us keep from raising taxes in the future. They're not necessarily going to be savings from the standpoint that there'll be money to reduce the tax rate. Most likely, they will, they will reduce the pressure on us to raise taxes.
I guess one of the issues that the board has said for them to outsource is because we have drivers who call in. We have a high turnover rate. And mainly, the reason why that happens is because we don't have the support that we need as a new driver. You are put in a position, you are placed, when you first come in, you're low in seniority, so you know you're going to get the leftovers, so it's left. Sometimes you get thrown into a route that has been, been posted two or three times because that specific driver prior to you cannot handle it because of lack of support. What can you do to guarantee that we will have that support if this bid goes through?
I've been doing, the question, and I don't know if everyone could hear it, but they certainly heard the applause. And, and that is, lack of support for drivers and the perception, especially for new drivers. I walked into your facility for the pre-bid meeting. I would have been lost. It was my first time in there. It's a huge facility. And, and, and I, one of my first thoughts was, how does a new employee get through this? A couple of the things that we do is, we will typically appoint a senior driver to be the mentor, or the big brother, whatever you want to call it, for the new driver. So that they can learn the ropes. We work with the union, because frankly, the union can help in this. The union can play a big role in this. But we try to set up our facilities so that that first time you walk in, you've applied for, for a job, you get to go around and meet everybody. As you go through your training, you get to meet everybody, you get reinforced. The manager is going to check in with you on, on your training as you proceed. Those are part of the normal ways we train our managers to be.
Okay. But currently, right now, due to our shortage in drivers, we have our field supervisors who are supposed to be our support people driving buses. When we need help, when we get on the radio and we're asking for help, they're 10-5, so that means they're, they're unavailable. So we're stuck on, in this position with a difficult child or a difficult whole route dealing with this.
What you're describing is the very need to outsource. Okay?
Really?
Really. Because we're professionals at finding the drivers, we're professionals at filling the ranks.
And retaining the drivers.
And the fact is, that if every driver who is qualified to be a driver is behind the wheel and taking care of her children, our staff can be there to support you. They can be there to wave you on in the morning and be there to accept you when you come back in. When you're short of drivers, when, when you don't have enough staff members to do your work, that is the biggest opportunity to fail. It truly is. And if teachers and administrators are doing their jobs, they're administrating and they're teaching. We have got 100 years of experience in staffing and training and coaching. You did describe why to outsource.
Our, our business depends on having great qualified drivers. Recruiting them, making us a great place to work and making it a place to stay, where you can grow in the company and enjoy coming to work every day, and that's our goal. We'll have town hall meetings, we want to listen to the issues and the problems and work collaboratively together to kind of fix the environment if there's issues or problems and make it a place where you, you want to show up to work.
So my question is, do you consider this a career? Or is this just a part-time job? Or this is a seasonal job according to the board?
No.
Because we have people, we have people who have been here 30-plus years.
Sure.
And this is not a seasonal job, it's a career.
Correct.
And I think that you should show us more respect in that aspect.
But you can, you can see Bob here spent 27 years in the industry here. It's a career for him, it's a career, and people have come up from the ranks and stayed as drivers or monitors wherever they want, and we give them opportunities to move up. This is, this is, this is our, this is what we do. This is our profession. We're, we're here for the long term and with the drivers here.
The term "part-time" is not an insult or a derogatory comment. It is a descriptor. The fact is, that young man over there, and he's still young because he's younger than me, you started out washing school buses, didn't you? He started out washing school buses 26 years ago. He's a district manager. There are opportunities in the district for you to step up. But you know what? At some point, you're limited if you don't have a type 20, 75 certificate or a teacher's degree. You're not limited with the experience that you obviously have. Belvedere is right down the road, Rockland's right down the road, DeKalb is right down the road. We have opportunities. Do we respect part-time employees? We better, we had better, because they are the backbone of our organization.
How will outsourcing affect summer school and what straws July 1st start time for outsourcing? Will there be any summer school this year?
I have to apologize, I really am.
Will it be summer school?
I, I can answer that.
Thanks.
Yes, the question was, how will outsourcing effective July 1 impact summer school? And the answer is, it won't. Drivers who are hired to serve or to provide the services for summer school will continue and remain on the district's payroll for, for that duration, for the summer school, because we've hired you to do that. So that won't impact you. Now, as far as Haskell, that's a July start time, I believe, is that right, Mr. Wilson? That would be then, if First Student, if services are outsourced to First Student, that would be First Student's responsibility.
Okay. So that's a half a million to outsource. What about additional costs to the district from unemployment to payouts to employees for sick days and personal days, bank time?
So, Lee?
Yes, I can answer that. That would all be negotiated, at, at least with the sick day payout. We'd negotiate with you and to discuss how that, that impact and what would occur with that. As far as unemployment, that all depends on whether or not you would be eligible for unemployment.
Okay. About the, will it be the current wages or will it be the, for student wages?
For what?
The payout for the sick days, if someone decided...
We would negotiate that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Sadlowski?
Thank you, just a few questions. For First Student, are you familiar with the district's last best final offer, which was imposed upon the members of our union on January 27th, 2017?
I can respond to that.
Miss Holy?
Yeah.
I was just asking about his familiarity with it.
Yeah, that, that really has nothing to do with the bid, but what I can respond is that that wasn't in the bid document, so to the extent they're familiar with it, they would have had to gain their own familiarity.
Very good, very good. Well, anyway, the starting wage rate now for a bus driver is $14 an hour under that imposed offer by the school district. Can you, can you describe the Unit 5 starting wage rate for the drivers who are here today?
I honestly don't have it, but you should have a copy of the contract.
$16 an hour.
Correct.
Thank you. Before the $16 an hour in the contract, did you struggle with retaining and recruiting drivers in, in Bloomington?
So you have a career in law, I see. Did we have, did we struggle? I believe in my comment that in 2015, we certainly struggled.
Do you know the number of drivers which First Student brought in from outside and housed in hotels and put people up to drive for the school district?
On average, I do.
Can you, can you tell everyone what that was?
On average, we brought in 10 drivers.
10 drivers.
And many of them came from Bardenville, like 40 minutes away.
I'm, I'm struggling with, with the question, but I, I'll try to give you my best answer. We have a contract with Unit 5, we had a contract with Unit 5. And when and if in any district where we are short drivers, we have a commitment to follow our contract to deliver children safely to and from school. If that costs me more money to do it, I'm doing it.
Very good, very good. Are you familiar with the number of vacancies that currently exist in the Rockford School District by way of bus drivers?
No, I'm not.
No.
We've been informed that that number is currently at 30.
Okay.
Do you have any familiarity with the district's budget?
It's not my business, my budget is my business.
Very good. So that, so you're not familiar with the fiscal year 2016 transportation budget, the Rockford School District, the amount of surplus?
Only do you agree that it was provided to us for the bid?
I, I do want to say that I know this is a very emotional issue. I think what we want to do is maintain the respect for everybody and civility for everybody. And, and, and I, you're, you're doing a wonderful job of cross-examination, but we're trying to make sure we stick towards the, really towards the bid.
We have a potential vendor who's going to come in and provide services to the families in Rockford affecting our drivers.
Right, but, but it still needs to be respectful. Thank you.
Well, I would, I would submit to you, I wish this board would adhere to your philosophy about a partnership being based on recruitment and retention of drivers, because that's all we want as well. Attracting the best and the brightest to put before Rockford's children every day. So we share the philosophy of the vendor. Nothing more?
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then now to a public, our public comments portion of this meeting, in which we invite the public to comment on the transportation outsourcing. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the person who will speak next. When you are the second person, please come to the front and sit in a vacant chair. That way we'll be able to devote the maximum amount of time to public comments. The speaking time is limited to two minutes and we have a digital clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. We have either four or five requests to speak. So, Mr. Sadlowski, you are first, to be followed by Tammy Artes, or Art? Not, not speaking? Okay, Stacy Owens then to be followed.
All set, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm going to answer my own questions. The, the, the school district of Rockford finished its fiscal year of 2016 with $25 million in surplus in its transportation fund. The projected surplus for 2017, the transportation fund alone, was $27 million. The five-year forecast fund balance for fiscal year up to and including 2021, forecasts according to the district's records, a $66 million surplus in the transportation fund alone. Again, we would ask the school district of Rockford to join us in recognizing and valuing the work that's done on a daily basis from early morning hours until late night hours. So it's anything but a part-time job. If I'm listening to the drivers that are here and those that I've had the privilege of meeting the last four years, it's basically a 16-hour day with two split shifts. You're on the hook for the employer, providing quality services to Rockford's schoolchildren. Our experience as a union, the research that we've done lends us to believe that this proposition will cost taxpayers more and will be less safe for children in the Rockford Public Schools should this service be privatized. Board member, you had a very good question, safety records. We've tried scouting those out and we'd asked that as well. Before entering into that decision, it's imperative that you look into the actual data, real experience, both locally and compare it with what's happened with the prospective bidder in Illinois and elsewhere.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Stacy Owens, to be followed by Sandy Steele.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Smith, and I'm the president of the Bus Drivers Local 1275. I am a mother, I'm a bus driver, and I feel like the board needs to show us more respect with our job. This is not a part-time job. This is not a seasonal job. I work from 5:47 in the morning to 7:20 at night with my daughter on my bus because I can't afford for her to stay in daycare. So she's on my bus. How fair is that? And I'm committed to everyone else's kid every day and get no recognition, no thank you. Yeah, we're a short staff, but the people who are here are the ones that are suffering every day. I've tried it. This outsourcing thing that you're doing to us, I think is a punishment because we're fighting on our contract. That's all it is. I fear that, you know, you've done this year after year, every time we go through a contract, but I guess we haven't fought hard enough. You say that you're, you implemented a contract... You say that you're, you implemented a contract on us, but then you're bargaining in good faith. How can you do both things at the same time? We call in every, every meeting with a proposal, a change, a modification, and we get nothing. We deserve respect. We make and break this district. We bring eighteen thousand kids to school every day, but we're not important?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, what's that? No, Stacy Owens or Sandy Steele, do they wanna speak? Okay.
My name is Sandy Steele, and I am Assam local twelve seventy-five recording secretary, and I'm proud to say I have been employed for fifteen school years. Over the, this is my third set of negotiations that I've done with the district, and this has got to be the most heart-wrenching one I've ever done. It gets harder and harder to keep coming to the meetings for the negotiations. Dr. Jarrett, I heard you several times say you would join us in our negotiations. To this day, I have yet to see you there. While we were on strike, I personally called your office, your secretary took down all my information, and I personally invited you. Still yet, have not seen you. We have more negotiations on the calendar coming up. I would love to see you there. I don't think you'll come, but I would love to see you there. Also, you guys talking about our attendance issue, this is not something that's new, this is something that's been going on for years, but you're putting it back onto us this year. Well, have you thought about going back and looking at your management to see why employees don't wanna stay? That may be your first standing ground to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, did Carla Serte wanna speak? Okay, I think that's it then. Kara? Kara Serte? No? It says she didn't wanna speak on the card, so, okay, thank you. Um, I will, I think we are finished with our agenda for tonight, so I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Ms. Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Connor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are adjourned at seven twenty PM.